This is Undaunted Life, a man's podcast. I'm your host Kyle Thompson. Let's get into it. Take no part in the unfruitful works of darkness, but instead expose them Ephesians 5:11. Now guys, if you're wondering if I've said that here recently, it's because I have. I think it was a week ago I said this on the podcast. I use that scripture, but we're going to get more into that here in just a second. But guys, if you have not done this already, make sure that you rate this show, give it a five star rating, subscribe wherever you're listening to this and leave us a positive review. That's one way that this continues to get out to more people is when people leave us those ratings and those positive reviews. Guys, if you think it's four stars or below, just move on. Just do something else with your time. Let's keep all the five star ratings raining down on us. So guys, let's go ahead and get into today's content. But guys, this is the third Tuesday in a row. Okay, that I'm going to be bringing you content about the pure evil going on in American public schools. Okay. And guys, I don't want to talk about this every week. I want to talk about other stuff. I actually had to bump something that I wanted to talk about today. So I could talk about this story into my non-American audience. I know there's a lot of you out there. Again, I'm just focusing on stuff that's happening in my neck of the woods on, you know, my home soil. But this is also something that you need to be worried about as well, especially if it's the countries that I know are actually listening to the show, but it won't be the last time that I'll have to talk about this stuff. Unfortunately, I'm sure this isn't going to be the last time, but here we go again. The reason I'm going to be talking about this particular story today is because the mainstream media has either completely shut this story out, or is actively gaslighting the public on the details as to what's going on. They're, they're leaving a lot of important context out, that kind of a thing. But we're going to walk through a bunch of stuff here and I'm going to try to keep it all straight because there's a lot of stuff to get into, but I'll just do my best. I'll make sure to give you the dates and all that. So let's go ahead and launch him. So on June the 22nd of 2021, okay, there were videos and pictures of a school board meeting in Loudoun County, Virginia, and they went viral. Okay. So the school board meeting featured debate and public comments on critical race theory content in the classrooms, and also a new transgender policy that they wanted to enact for transgender students that were in their school. Essentially, the transgender student policy would require faculty and staff at the school to quote unquote, affirm the chosen gender identities of their students, you know, refer to them by their preferred pronouns. They would allow students to use bathrooms of their choice regardless of their biological sex, and so on and so forth. This is the stuff that you're fairly familiar with. So a lot of parents were not really happy with this. And so at this June 22nd school board meeting, they were voicing their disdain. And they were voicing it very loudly. Okay. And they, they certainly were not on their best behavior when they were doing that. A lot has been made about the, you know, the fact that they weren't exactly being couthe, they were being rather uncouth, and they weren't being very nice. And you know, who could blame them? But neither were all the people that were in support of critical race theory and the transgender student policies. Cause there were a lot of activists there that you're not hearing about in the media at this June 22nd thing. They were only talking about the angry parents, right? But then, because of the disturbance that was being caused at the school board meeting, and after repeated warnings for everyone to simmer down again, on both sides of the issue, the school board unanimously voted to end the public comment section of the meeting, which absolutely blew the lid off the place because that's why they're there. They're not there to listen to you. They're there so you can listen to them because they were elected by you and they're paid for with their tax dollars. So at the same time, your job is being taken care of by these people, you have to listen to them. And so when you say, oh, we're not going to listen to the public anymore, you should assume that you're not going to get a positive reaction there. So then rather shockingly, actually, the Loudoun County Sheriff's Office declared that the meeting was an unlawful assembly. Okay. Cause I guess they couldn't really, you know, get it under control. And they threatened any parents that didn't leave immediately that they would be arrested for trespassing. Okay. So then there were actually multiple reports, I remember this at the time of two different people actually being arrested at this Loudoun County, Virginia School Board meeting. And for what, you know, for all we knew, we were just left to assume that it was because of trespassing or disturbing the peace. Okay. Which is not even close to what happened. Okay. One of the men arrested that day was a guy named Scott Smith. He's a plumber, works in that area, business owner, there you go. But Smith's arrests in particular went viral. So Smith is the father of a student there in Loudoun County, Virginia School District. And he was arrested and his, he was, his face was bloodied and his shirt was up over his belly and it was, you know, his crack was hanging out as he was being dragged out basically on his face by the cops. You know, there was just, you basically saw a video of this struggle. And then you saw the horrible pictures and you saw all these different things. You saw the mug shot. It just didn't really look good for him. Okay. He became the poster child, right? For these domestic terrorists, according to the National School Boards Association. And if you're not sure what I'm talking about, go back to last week, episode 245, it's called when the government treats parents like domestic terrorists. So all summer and into the fall, we've seen it's guys like Scott Smith. It's guys like these people that they're the ones that we gotta be worried about. Okay. These are the ones that we really gotta be worried about because they're making our jobs in our schools thus less safe. Right? So everyone just assumed that Scott Smith was furious about the proceedings of that June 22nd school board meeting, and he just lost his temper. You know, he just blew his lid. But that wasn't even close to the whole story. Okay. But let's fast forward to Monday, October the 11th. The Daily Wire broke an exclusive investigative report by Luke Rosiak, uh, Rosiak, uh, which turns out to be really one of the most horrific cover-up stories that I think I've ever heard of. Okay. Because it's concerning children. Now, as a quick aside, for this episode, and also for a lot of episodes, I use the Daily Wire, I cite them quite a bit. Now, I don't cite them for everything. I try to make sure there's a plethora of different sources, but I feel like the Daily Wire, they obviously, when they're doing editorializing, that's coming from a conservative worldview, but they're taking most things, they're trying to be centrist in terms of, I want to get you the content. I want to get you the information, what's really happening on the ground. And they're the ones that broke this story. So anyone that's like, oh, you're just talking about the Daily Wire, they're the ones that broke the story. No one else broke the story. So the Wall Street Journal didn't, you know, New York Times didn't do it, you know, Vox News didn't do it. It was the Daily Wire. Okay. So according to Rosiak at the Daily Wire, at this June 22nd school board meeting, the Loudoun County Public Schools Superintendent, a guy named Scott Ziegler, and other school board members lectured the public, you know, essentially treating them like morons, saying that their public concerns about the transgender policy was all in their heads. Like, you know, there, there's no issue with transgender students. We just need to be more accepting and more loving. There's no problems going on in the bathrooms. There's no bathroom debates or anything like that. Everything's just fine. If you don't think so, you're a bigot and an idiot. Right? But he also said that their school system had no record. Again, this is a superintendent. He said their school district had no record whatsoever of any assaults occurring in any school bathrooms. Okay. Which is obviously a concern for parents with girls, when the school district allows boys that think they're girls into the girls restrooms. That's an obvious concern for any father that has a daughter. Okay. But here's an interaction between school board member Beth Barts and Superintendent Ziegler. So this is Barts. Our students don't, do not need to be protected and they are not in danger. Do we have assaults in the bathrooms or locker rooms regularly? And this was Ziegler's response. To my knowledge, we don't have any record of assaults occurring in our restrooms. Okay. And I want you to remember that he said that. He says, to my knowledge, we don't have any record of assaults occurring in our restrooms. Now, a little side note on Barts, this is a person that Ziegler was talking to. She was stripped of her committee assignments back in the day, uh, by people that agreed with her because she was such an absolute turd to parents that disagreed with her on her, you know, progressive policy prescriptions. Okay. So this person's a nutcase. She's a zealot. She's a left wing ideologue. She's a crazy person, right? But she basically, when she was taken out of all of her committee assignments, she went to a Facebook group and she couldn't really do it because you know, you know, she was a, you know, public official and all those different things. But she, in this group encouraged parents that agreed with her left wing radical crazy progressive policy agenda to dox the parents that were on the other side. So find out who these parents are, to post their names, their addresses, the businesses they own, all these different things. So that's this person. She's on the school board. So here's another interaction. We'll go back to Superintendent Ziegler, that he's having with the chair of the school board named Brenda Sheridan. So this is Sheridan. Have we had any issues involving transgender students in our bathrooms or locker rooms? And this is Ziegler's response. Time Magazine in 2016 called that a red herring, that the data was simply not playing out that transgender students were more likely to assault cisgender students in restrooms that then were other students. In fact, regardless of the gender identity of the student, if a crime or violation of the rules were committed, that would be investigated and dealt with to the full extent of the rules of law. I think it's important to keep our perspective on this. We've heard it several times tonight from our public speakers, but the predator transgender student or person simply does not exist. I want you to remember that he said that as well. Okay. And then when we fast forward from there to August the 11th, uh, the school board, well, actually, you know, we kind of have to go back in time, but on August the 11th, the school board voted to approve this transgender policy. So it's going to be enforced, something that all the, you know, people had to kind of take into account. But now let's actually go back to Scott Smith. Okay. This is the parent that was, that was arrested at the school board meeting back on the 22nd of June. So I'm going to be reading directly from Rosiak's reporting at the DailyWire.com here. What people did not know is that weeks prior, on May the 28th, Smith says, a boy allegedly wearing a skirt entered the girls bathroom at nearby Stonebridge High School where he sexually assaulted Smith's ninth grade daughter. And you know, before I continue, a little bit of a graphic warning here. So if you're listening to this with kids, it will get fairly graphic. You're gonna have to have some conversations if you don't heed my warning. So there's your fair warning. Back to the reporting. Juvenile records are sealed, but Smith's attorney, Elizabeth Lancaster, told the Daily Wire that a boy was charged with two counts of forcible sodomy, one count of anal sodomy, and one count of forcible fellatio, or oral sex, related to the incident that day at that school. So a boy in a dress goes into a girl's bathroom and forcibly butt and face rapes a ninth grader. That's great. But let's keep going. The, the thing that happened at the June 22nd meeting, the June 22nd school board meeting, the reason why Scott Smith got arrested is because, uh, there was an activist there who was wearing this rainbow shirt, left wing activist. She apparently came up and was saying something to Scott Smith's wife. Scott, you know, Smith kind of intervened like, hey, what are you saying? And Scott Smith tried to explain to this lady that, look, I don't think that we should do this because, you know, we're, we're gay affirming and we're fine with all that, but my child was raped in a bathroom by a boy wearing a dress. And this left wing activist said, sir, that's not what happened. Some left wing kook who just showed up there, right? Some stay at home mom that just supports everything that Bernie Sanders or Joe Biden or Barack Obama or Hillary Clinton or any of those people would say, came up and told this father that, no, 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 your daughter wasn't raped. You're mistaken. So obviously this didn't make him very happy with, with kind of what was going on there. But then this left wing activist kind of got in his face and was like, look, I'm going to ruin you. I'm going to ruin you and your business because you're a bigot and you're spreading this hate. You know, I'm going to, I'm going to run your, your plumbing, uh, your company into the ground. Like I'm going to just destroy you on social media. And so they start getting into it like verbally, right? So Scott Smith and this lady are kind of getting into it. And then a cop comes up behind Scott Smith and kind of grabs his arm, which again, this kind of goes to when people talk about gender privilege or something like that. Notice how they didn't try to get the woman away from him. They tried to get the man away from her, but you know, I'll digress here. And so as soon as he feels somebody grabbing his arm from behind, he kind of whips his arm like, hey, don't touch me. And then he starts just basically pushing people. And he ended up, he was pushing three sheriff's deputies. And so they tackle him, they take him down, they punch him in the face. He's all bloody and you know, he's handcuffed and he's taken out there for, you know, disturbing the peace and in the kind of the whole nine yards, right? That's basically what happened. But then interestingly enough, Loudoun County's, you know, very progressive top prosecutor, a woman named Bhuta Bibaraj, I believe is how you say it, we'll just say Bibaraj, she literally showed up in court to personally prosecute Smith for disorderly conduct and resisting arrest. Okay. And the judge in this case was basically like, I've never actually had a disorderly conduct thing go through the system, like ever in his entire life. Basically arrested for disorderly conduct, but no one's ever actually like gets in trouble for that. Like they don't actually go down for that. They don't end up doing time. But this very progressive prosecutor wanted to make sure that this father of, of a raped child was going to actually have to serve prison time, right? For this misdemeanor. And we'll do way more, you know, talking about that here in just a second. But now I want to go back to May the 28th. Okay. So that was the day, uh, that, you know, a lot of this stuff went down. So Smith was called to the school by school officials. Okay. He was told that his daughter was assaulted, you know, just assaulted by a boy in a bathroom at school. Okay. So he thought as he's driving up there and as he's walking into the school that his daughter had been beaten up, which is bad enough. You know, they, you know, parent wants their kid to get beat up, but that's what he was thinking. But obviously it was much worse than that. So when he arrived at the school, it became clear to Smith, you know, very quickly that his daughter wasn't just assaulted, that she was actually raped. Okay. Then the school official, this is, this is crazy. This is absolutely crazy. The school officials told Smith that they were going to handle this situation in-house. The school was going to handle a violent rape in-house, in-house, meaning no law enforcement, no legal intervention. They were just going to handle it in-house. Now, I've heard of schools handling, you know, theft in-house. I've heard of school handling, you know, fistfights, right? Between two kids get into an argument and a fist. I've, I've heard of all those things being handled in-house. And I've been, I've also heard of some of those things being turned over to the authorities. But a violent rape, a violent sodomizing of another human being, they were just going to handle it in-house. And there's a reason for that. So Smith, the dad, as you can imagine, he absolutely flips out. He absolutely flips out. He calls the principal a pussy. He starts making a major scene, right? A major scene. So sheriff's deputies were eventually called to the scene, but not to deal with the violent rapist, mind you. No, 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 no. But to deal with Smith. The school didn't want to call the sheriffs. They didn't want to call the law to deal with the rapist, but they did want to do it to deal with an angry father. Really? Because he was making a scene. Just think about that. And so the, the good thing about this is that Smith was actually not arrested for causing a disturbance. Apparently the sheriffs kind of figured out what was going on and the deputies escorted Smith and his daughter to the hospital where they administered a rape kit, which confirmed that the daughter was indeed raped. Okay. So the same day at 4:48 PM, the principal sent out an email to the school community. And I'm just going to read the, it's a short email. I just want to read this because just, this is just crazy what this guy is actually focusing on. So here we go. Good evening, Stonebridge families. This is Stonebridge Principal Tim Flynn. There was an incident in the main office area today that required the Loudoun County Sheriff's Office to dispatch deputies to Stonebridge. The incident was confirmed, was confined to the main office in the entrance area to the school. There was no threat to the safety of the student body. The incident was witnessed by a small number of students who were meeting with staff adjacent to the main office. Counseling services and the services of our unified mental health team are available for any student who may need to talk about today's incident. Students might have noticed sheriff's office personnel on campus, and I wanted to let you know that something out of the ordinary happened at school today. The safety of our students and staff is the top priority of Loudoun County Public Schools. Remember, he said that as well. This is going to be the remember that, that this guy said this thing in the past episode, right? So we got superintendent, now we got the principal. You know, they're, they're just so concerned with the student's safety, right? And gosh darn it, if a, if a kid saw a guy making a scene in the office, that, that kid may need counseling because he can't handle somebody getting angry, right? Like that, that's somehow beyond the pale for a kid to be able to deal with. You want to talk about the coddling of the American mind? My goodness. So this is where the story, this is the part in the story where it somehow gets worse. I have no idea how a story like this, you know, about the brutal rape of a kid, a girl in a girl's bathroom by a kid that dresses up as a girl, but is a boy. I can't imagine this being worse, but here we go. Smith was guaranteed, again, the dad, he was guaranteed by the juvenile court prosecutors that, you know, we're dealing with his daughter's rapist, that the boy, the rapist would be held responsible for his actions, right? And that he would be confined to house arrest until his likely conviction on October the 14th. Okay. So that was his court date. And that's where he would likely be giving a guilty plea to a lesser sexual assault charge, right? Which I don't personally agree with. Again, I think rapists should all be castrated and killed. That's just me. The kid's a kid. Maybe you think that something different should happen to him. That's kind of where I fall on it. But likely the kid would plead guilty to, you know, felony aggravated sexual battery or something like that. So Smith was convinced also to keep quiet about this situation because he didn't want to accidentally mess up the prosecution, you know, of this she-he rapist demon by, you know, saying things in the public eye and, you know, kind of messing with the case. And we've all heard about things that, you know, where somebody says something in public and then it messes up the case. They can't prosecute. So the dad was basically convinced, hey, we got to keep this within the family right now. Let's not talk about it. But we're going to go back to Rosiak's reporting here. Okay. But on October the 6th, okay, remember that the assault of the first girl was, you know, in May of that year. Now this is October the 6th. According to Loudoun County Sheriff's Office, a 15-year-old was charged with sexual battery and abduction after police said he forced a girl into an empty classroom, held her against her will, and touched her inappropriately. Lancaster, that's Smith's attorney, says the suspect is the same boy that allegedly attacked Smith's daughter. So apparently the child rapist wasn't actually on house arrest until October 14th, whenever they had, you know, uh, whenever they were going to have his court date. Because on October the 6th, at a different school in the Loudoun County School District, he sexually assaulted another girl. Loudoun County School District evidently just moved him to a different school. They moved a rapist to a different school in the same school district. And I'm assuming they didn't send a letter out to all the parents in that grade or in that school or in that community that, hey, by the way, this kid who has been arrested for forcibly sodomizing another human being, he's going to be in your school, just in case you wanted to know that. No, they didn't inform anybody. Now, there's been some updates on this story since the initial story broke. So I'm just going to go through these very quickly. So Loudoun County Public Schools might actually need to be renamed rape public schools because it's just, it's just crazy to me. I'll go back to the reporting here. I was going to go into some other subjects, but Rosiak actually reported on this as well. Loudoun County Public Schools did not record multiple known incidents of alleged sexual assault in schools dating back several years, despite a law that requires statistics about school safety incidents to be reported to the public and which includes provisions holding school superintendents personally liable for violations. A Daily Wire review of public records found. So guys, there's more on that on the show notes there. You can just find the entire story so you can read into all the details. And this is kind of an aside because I can't really spend, you know, today talking about this because it's such a big topic, but everyone loves to talk about, rightfully so, the sexual abuse scandal that was or is going on in the Catholic Church, but they ignore Protestant churches, they ignore schools, they ignore all these different things. Guys, this stuff happens all the time. It happened in my high school. There, there was a, you know, a high school teacher that would, you know, hit on all the girls and, you know, hit on my girlfriend and different things like that. And wouldn't you know, a few years down the road, he's had sex with one of his students, right? This is a married father of like, you know, two or three kids, but these things happen all the time. Okay. And it's not reported on nearly enough. It's kind of swept under the rug. It's like, anyway, we'll get more into kind of how that's even crazy here in a little bit, but that was one update. But also, the Smith family is suing Loudoun County Public Schools. So this is from Charlotte Pinz Bond at the Daily Wire. The family of a girl who was allegedly raped in her school bathroom is pursuing civil action against Loudoun County Public Schools under the provision of Title IX after the release of the Daily Wire's blockbuster report alleging that Loudoun County Public Schools covered up the sexual assault. Um, and so that's, that's an interesting thing here that I think most people aren't really talking about. And again, you can get that story all in the show notes as well, is that these families are supposed to just kind of sit here and take it, right? But we do live in a fairly litigious society, but if there's ever been a family that needed to sue somebody for something, I think this is a pretty darn good case. But then also, Barts bites the dust. So this is from Eric Quintanar at the Daily Wire. Beth Barts, a far-left member of the Loudoun County School Board District, has resigned from her position. First elected in 2019, Barts has been criticized by parents groups over critical race theory and transgender policies in the school system. Her resignation, which will take effect on November the 2nd of 2021, staves off an ongoing recall attempt. So this is the woman from earlier that was like, basically nothing's going on here. This is the same woman that wanted to dox you if you're on the other side of her positions. That, you know, link to all that is in the show notes as well. But this is the most egregious thing that I've seen in all the updates because the updates were coming fast and furious since last Monday. Okay. But this was the most egregious. The Superintendent Ziegler, okay, who's coming up again, he's either a liar or a complete idiot. Okay. So remember this from earlier in the show. Barts asked him, our students do not need to be protected and they are not in danger. Do we have assaults in our bathrooms or locker rooms regularly? And Ziegler said, to my knowledge, we don't have any record of assaults occurring in our restrooms. Okay. Now, there's a great article in the show notes, again, now I'm going to be loading you up in the show notes today, that goes into all the different crazy crap Ziegler has said since all this blew up, including how this is all somehow Trump's fault. I'm not kidding you. Somehow this has to do with Donald Trump. But this is from Emily Zenati at the Daily Wire. Finally, Ziegler addressed his comments suggesting that LCPS, that's Loudoun County Public Schools, had not had an alleged sexual assault in the bathroom, claiming that he wrongly interpreted the question he was being asked. And this is a direct quote from him. Board member Barts asked a question about disciplines, about discipline incidents in the bathrooms that I wrongfully interpreted as incidents involving transgender and gender fluid students. I did this because I was viewing the question in the light of the general questions and the debate around policy zero or 8040 that was occurring at the time. Multiple board members asked questions about the process, the experience of students, and plans for transgender students and bathroom use during that discussion. My mindset was in that line with the subject. At another point in the conversation, Chair Sheridan asked a question specifically about incidents involving transgender students, and I responded in the same way. I regret that my comments were misleading and I apologize for the distress that error caused families. I should have asked board member Barts clarifying questions to get to the root of her question, rather than assuming what she meant. I will do better in the future. I mean, the gall of this guy. Oh, no, no, I, I didn't answer just thinking about all alleged rapes and sodomies that have gone on in our bathrooms. I thought you were just talking about the ones that involve transgender and gender fluid students. That was his excuse. You want to talk about gaslighting? What an excuse. Okay. And guys, there will certainly be more fallout from this whole situation. So just make sure you follow the Daily Wire for their reporting, because again, I got other subjects I got to get to. I don't know if I'm going to be able to keep up with this one as much as I would like to or talk about here on the show. But this story matters for a lot of reasons. Okay. It is important for a lot of reasons. So we're going to go into that. The first reason that I had thought of is that school boards, you know, like the one in Loudoun County, Virginia, they would much rather avoid even the appearance of being bigoted, as opposed to ensuring the safety of its student body. This is the ultimate cover-up. Okay. Because the thing that's not talked about enough in this case is that the rapist in this case apparently identifies as bisexual and gender fluid. So when, when that guy said, that Ziegler said it had, oh, I didn't think you were talking about, you know, students that, you know, were transgender, people that are on the gender fluid spectrum are still in that transgender spectrum as well. And he just completely ignores it. And that this kid, this rapist is reportedly, he likes wearing dresses and, you know, who wear a dress one day, who are jeans the next day. He kind of can't figure it out. That, that goes back to the gender fluidity part of what he's doing. But he was doing so that the day that he raped this girl, you know, butt raped her and face raped her, that day, he was wearing a dress. He was gender fluid that day. He was a female that day. Right? But the school board, you know, this wild left wing progressive school board, they knew, they knew that if a story like this got out into the public, that they'd never be able to pass their transgender student policy. And that had to be preserved above all else. Just think about it. Why else do you think they wanted to handle the initial rape in-house? If not to protect their precious policy? If not to protect their left wing progressive agenda? Right? Because if parents were talking about this, because we're not talking about the ethereal anymore, right? We're not talking about something that could happen. The parents would have had to reckon with what was happening. And if the school board, or if the, if the community had known about this before the school board approved it and let it go through, like if the community knew about it and then they approved it, every single one of those people would be taken out of office. All of them would have been recalled immediately. They couldn't have that because they wanted to get their agenda through and they also wanted to keep power. That's a really important thing to think about. But also, the mainstream media will avoid stories like this one because it goes against their agenda, goes against their narrative. Okay. But if they're forced to cover it, they will do so incompletely, or they will gaslight you. So the Washington Post, they finally reported on it late last week, but they left out a bunch of contexts, you know, very important contexts. And then there's also this gaslighting going on from different journalists. You know, this was an anecdotal incident. You know, this was a one-off. This assault happened without the transgender policy in place. So it's not the transgender policy's fault. You know, the person who allegedly assaulted the girl doesn't even identify as trans. It's all this gaslighting that people can't see in front of their own eyes. This kid identifies himself as gender fluid. Right? So constantly, he's just floating back and forth between male and female. Okay. But for people that are reasonable, for people whose prefrontal cortexes actually work, we know that that's not the case. That's not a possible thing that can happen. But this kid believes it. This young boy believes that. He believes that he can be a girl one moment. Or contrastingly, he's faking. Remember all these stories? You've probably heard of these stories of people that go to prisons and they're in states where if you say that you're transgender, they have to put you in the prison that is, that goes with you, the gender that you feel, not your assigned gender at birth. Right? So you have these women in women's prisons getting raped by men because the man's like, oh, no, 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 I'm a woman. And then they go in there and brutally rape people and impregnate them, right? In a woman's prison. Now, I don't know anything about this kid. I don't know him personally. I don't know anything about his situation. Right? I'm sure we're going to learn a whole lot more about him over the next several months. But is this possible? That in order to get into these women's bathrooms? Because we can't assume that this is the only two times this kid has done this. He pulls one girl into a classroom and does a bunch of stuff to her, pulls one girl into the bathroom and rapes her. Are we assuming these are the only two times this person has done this? If this is a sexual predator, which he absolutely sounds like one, can we assume that maybe he was wearing a dress because it would be easier for him to get access to his victims? Is that possible? Am I the most bigoted person ever for pointing that out? But also, this story is very important. And I've talked about this basically every episode leading up to this one. If it can happen in Loudoun County, Virginia, it can happen in your school district. Guys, go back to 243, episode 243 of this podcast is called normalizing pedophilia, your kid's classroom and library. We talk about all these different, you know, books and, and different types of teaching environments that are happening in our schools and these pornographic and pedophilic books that are happening that are in, in schools all over the place, including schools that are, you know, a stone's throw away from my house. Right? And we're going to go back to Rosiak because I think he pointed out a couple of really important things in his reporting. In November of 2019, progressive activists won public office in Loudoun County with a, with as little as 51% of the vote, and democratic control was cemented. It is a peculiarity of Virginia law that local elections are held in odd numbered years, leading to low turnout elections that can be carried by small numbers of people with strong beliefs. Some of these elections were defined by the brazen intervention of outside interests. It was clear that they were often more interested in national politics than in the everyday concerns of local residents. Okay. So, you know, talked about, you know, the brazen intervention of outside interests. George Soros spent almost a million dollars to get that prosecutor I talked about earlier, the one that wanted to just bury Scott Smith, you know, Babur Bibaraj or whatever her name is, he spent a million dollars to try to get her in office. The, the opponent spent just over a hundred thousand dollars, right? Just over a hundred thousand dollars and only lost by 1%. And you've heard people talk about this before, that George Soros, George Soros' MO is that he will get a really, really left wing person in office, and then he will primary that person with someone that's even more left wing than them. That's kind of his deal. And so you're worried about your local community, but the people that are being put in these positions of power, they're not worried about the local community as much as they're worried about the national narrative. Because again, a lot of these people have more of kind of a left wing Marxist authoritarian mindset to where they want everything to be top-down from the federal government. They don't want states' rights. They don't want local municipalities' rights. They don't want county rights. They don't want any of those things. They want you to just do exactly what they say, and they want every- They want you to just do exactly what they say and they want every single tie in Washington to be blue and for you to just take it, just bend over and take it, right? That's exactly what they want. But also from Rosie Ak, though Smith's daughter has been allegedly raped and separately beaten at school, the teen has adopted increasingly strong progressive views over the course of her tenure at LCPS, okay? Where does she get these ideas? From school, obviously, Jess said, that was the mom, it's not from our home. So this is the mom of the little girl that was raped saying that she has these very left-leaning ideas that she didn't get from the household. The household seems to be pretty moderate from the things that I'm seeing about mom and dad, mom and dad Smith, right? But whenever you're at this public school, again, this was a ninth grader. So presumably she's been in public school since she was in kindergarten. So for all of those years, for a decade, she's been indoctrinated. This little girl has been indoctrinated into these leftist ideologies, into these dangerous satanic ideologies. This isn't about, you know, liberal, conservative, any of those things, this is about leftism. Which is a completely separate thing, thing entirely from liberalism. But here's the mom that's dealing with her daughter and the fallout, that's obviously going to have a ripple effect, that's going to follow this family for the rest of their lives. And they're worried about their daughter's mindset. Because she's, she's picked up these strongly progressive views. So if her daughter was a voting aid, she likely would have voted for the transgender policy. And yet look at what something, you know, one of the, the logical outworkings of this policy has done. If you have a predator in your school, all they have to do to get closer to the prey is wear a dress. And say, respect my pronouns, you bigot, right? But also this story has some downstream political consequences. Okay, so this story in one county of Virginia affects the Virginia gubernatorial race, okay? So this year on November the 2nd, there is an election between Democrat Terry McAuliffe and Republican Glenn Youngkin, which I've talked about before. So Terry McAuliffe was the guy that basically said, you know, at a debate that, hey, we don't need parents coming in and telling us what, what to teach their kids. We decide that, you just deal with it, right? Which has been terrible for him in light of all the things that have been happening with this story. But you might have wondered, you know, as an aside, why Governor Blackface or, you know, KKK hoodie guy, you know, Ralph Northam, why he can't run for reelection? The Constitution of Virginia actually doesn't allow for you, governors to serve consecutive terms. So Ralph Northam's going to have to go do something else, maybe he can run the NAACP. Or if he's not feeling like doing the blackface thing that day, maybe he can run, you know, his favorite white supremacist organization. But this type of a guy, um, you know, Terry McAuliffe, going back to Terry McAuliffe, he's trying to make sure that they can solidify what they've been able to do in the state of Virginia, which that, the state of Virginia basically went from red to blue. They skipped the purple stage, right? But if Glenn Youngkin wins this race, if the Republican wins this race, that is going to be a massive siren warning to everybody in the country that what leftists want to do, what Democrats in the country of the United States want to do is not popular with parents. That parents were asleep pre-2019, they were asleep pre-COVID, right? They're not asleep anymore. They, they're hip to what you're trying to do. They're, they're trying to, they're trying to intercede now on behalf of their children, because maybe they, they can't do the private school thing or the home school thing, it doesn't really work for that family. But they want to make sure that when they send their kids to your school, that they're not being indoctrinated, right? That they're actually being taught something, again, I say this all the time. Teachers can't get their entire classrooms to get up to grade level standards and yet we want them talking about critical race theory and yet we want them talking about gender fluidity? Like we want them talking about the whole array of LGBTQ issues, the entire gender revolution and sexual revolution, we want them talking about all these things? Of course not, of course we don't. So there's obviously going to be some consequences there, so I would keep an eye on that race there on November the 2nd. But also the 2022 midterms, which is so dumb, I feel like we're already talking about these midterms, we didn't talk about the midterms since the moment we all realized that Donald Trump actually lost. But then when you go into the midterms, the midterms look horrible for the Democrats. And just based solely on the fact that Joe Biden, co-president Biden, is horrible. Like he's terrible at this, with, which anybody could have known was going to happen. I think the only Republican that he could have beaten was Donald Trump, right? Because the media absolutely had it out for Donald Trump. But it's been an absolutely horrific year for the Biden administration. They don't have any big wins, you know, they're probably going to get something on this spending bill by the end of the year, but it's not going to be all that they wanted. But they were probably already going to get shellacked in the midterms. But if in a blue state, a solidly blue state, a state that moved right from red to blue, if that state elects a Republican governor, man, I think it's going to be even worse in 2022. Because I don't think the Democrats are smart enough to stop their agenda, because it's the agenda at all costs now. Because a guy like Joe Biden, he's not an actual moderate, he might be in his bones, but he's not going to legislate that way because his party is going so much farther left than he ever could have imagined. And if they keep doing that over the next 13 months, they're going to get absolutely destroyed. But then that goes into the downstream consequences of 2024, right? So there's going to be House and Senate seats up in 24, uh, but also the, the president's office, the office of the president is going to be up again. And I think that the Republicans, if things stay on this trajectory, which a lot can happen by then, I mean, just look at the first three years of Trump and then the last year of Trump, no one thought that there was going to be a global pandemic. But at the very, very end of all of this, I think Democrats are in serious trouble of losing the White House, even though I think they're probably going to lose the House and the Senate in 2022. And this is probably going to make some, some Trumpers mad, but unless Donald Trump runs, I think a Republican's going to win. So the way that I mean that is like, I think just about any Republican, even any major Republican right now could beat Joe Biden in a race, but I'm not sure that Donald Trump can. I don't think it has nearly as much to do with Donald Trump as it has to do with everything that's surrounding Donald Trump. And, you know, we'll talk about this later, whenever he actually throws his, you know, hat in that he is going to actually run because no one else in the Republican Party is going to be able to overtake him, right? And then, you know, if someone does, they're going to be able to, you know, all those Trump people, all those MAGA people are going to be sitting home. This could be a major, major issue moving forward for the Republicans, is what do you do with Donald Trump if he doesn't want to get out of the way, right? And, you know, so I'll, I'll just kind of go and hop off here because this isn't about Donald Trump, this isn't about, you know, the election, whether it was stolen January 6th, any of that kind of stuff. But again, there, there's going to be a lot of downstream consequences of a story like this. The only thing that I hope for the voters of Virginia is that they remember stories like this, uh, you know, around three weeks from now, when they're voting, or two weeks from now, when they're voting for this, when they're voting for governor. Because Terry McAuliffe wants to do things his way, the democratic way, the shut up and take it way. That this is what we're going to do with your kids and you're just going to have to shut up and deal with it, right? And you need to figure out, if you're in Virginia, if that's what you want. And if you're one of those people that doesn't really like to get involved in politics, but you want your kids not to be indoctrinated when they're in their K through 12 classrooms, you might need to get off your butt and vote that year, okay? But the last thing in terms of this story that I think is really important to talk with and then we'll wrap up, is you, you know, the concerned American parent will be branded a bigot if you oppose transgender policies like the one that went into effect in Loudoun County, Virginia. And I say, wear that badge proudly. Wear it proudly. Because the thing is, is just because someone else says that you are something, doesn't make you that something that they said you are. Oh, you're a bigot, you're anti-trans, you're anti-trans rights, all those things, no, I'm not. You don't even technically have to dignify their stupid comment with a response. But if they want to call you a bigot, say, sure, I'm a bigot. But as long as I have, if I have to be a bigot, but my kid is safe at school from a policy like this, whether it enacts in a physical way like it did for Scott Smith's daughter or just in a theoretical way in the minds of these children, fine, fine. Wear a sticker every day on your forehead that says bigot, just deal with it. Because again, I feel like Americans are so terrified of being called a bigot that they don't want to stand up. Again, I talk about this all the time, but in case you've missed it, I'll say it again. Republicans, conservatives, Christians, people that can kind of, you know, coalesce into that type of a group, they can never find a hill that's worth dying on. Especially conservative Christians that are just nice people, they don't really want to walk, rock the boat, they, they can't find a hill worth dying on, right? But one day they will wake up and the war will have been won by the other side and they will realize that they never picked up their helmet, they never picked up their shield, they never picked up their sword, they never got into the fight. But this is the reason that we do it. Why did I, you know, talk about Ephesians 5:11 again? Take no part in the unfruitful works of darkness, but instead expose them? It's because it's our duty to do that. And I'm talking specifically to the Christians right now, we're called to be salt and light in this world. Well, salt can't, is supposed to be a preservative, but salt can't preserve anything if it's not salty. So I'm encouraging all of you to get salty, especially on subjects like this. For you, what could be more important than the potential indoctrination of your children under left-wing gender theory? I mean, just think about it. Because most of you are not going to experience, and thank God for that, you're not going to experience what Scott Smith and his family have had to experience, what his daughter has experienced, right? Being raped because policies like this are going to make it easier for that. But you have an impact as to what happens at your kid's school. Again, go back to episode 243, I give you an actual rundown on some of the things that you can tangibly do to make sure your kids aren't being indoctrinated in this madness, even if they don't go to some sort of parochial school or, you know, private Christian school or something like that. You can have an impact, but you just have to step up and be courageous. All right, guys, before we let you go, we are going to do a quick resilience boost, as you know by now at Undaunted Life, our mission is equipping men to push back darkness with content that forges spiritual, mental and physical resilience. So I'm just going to give you a rundown of all the articles today, so they're all from the Daily Wire, I'll just read you the titles. Investigation Loudoun County Schools Tried To Conceal Sexual Assault Against Daughter In Bathroom, Father Says. Loudoun County Schools Did Not Record Multiple Alleged Sexual Assaults Over A Period Of Years Despite State Law Records Show. Loudoun County Update, Family Of Alleged Rape Victim To Sue School District. Loudoun County School Board Member Resigns Following Daily Wire Investigation. And Loudoun County Superintendent Apologizes Following The Daily Wire Investigation, Claims He Misunderstood Question About Bathroom Sex Assaults. So all of those articles are in order of how I talked about them or when I talked about them on this particular episode, okay? All right, guys, thanks so much for listening to this podcast, we do appreciate it. Wherever you're listening to this, just like I said from the top, make sure that you subscribe, rate and leave us a five-star review. If you want me to come speak live at your event or on your podcast, shoot me an email to info@undaunted.life, that's I-N-F-O@undaunted.life. Follow us on Instagram and TikTok and like us on Facebook, you can also check out our website for everything else, including how to donate to keep more content like this coming. You can just go to www.undaunted.life. We also want to thank the band August Burns Red for allowing us to use their music for our content. The intro outro track on this podcast is their song Cutting The Ties, which is off their 10th anniversary re-recording of their album Leveller. The links are in the description. I'm your host, Kyle Thompson. Remember, keep pushing back darkness, keep forging spiritual, mental and physical resilience, keep seeking the Lion of Judah.